We'll call the order of the October 19th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. And we'll begin at 6:00. This point in time, Director Kramvik, can you do roll call, please?
Yes, Gorham.
Here.
Calruse. Jaeger. Erickson.
Yes.
Marone. Woodward.
Here.
Duval.
Here. And now if all could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
... of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the routine justice for all.
Thank you. We are now at item four on our agenda approval or amendment to the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I do have one change the minutes. I'm sorry, I'll make the motion for the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion as our second.
Second, Gorham.
All right, motion to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. We are at item five on the agenda, approval of the minutes. Mr. Erickson, please.
Thank you. Just to note that I was in attendance at the last meeting and was not recorded, so move to approve with that correction.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Erickson, second by Gorham. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, we're on to item six, old business, which we have none. So we are on to item seven, new business, 7A, consideration of a preliminary Platte Creekside Community Development. Director Kramvik, can you set that up for us, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So Vicki Kenny has submitted a request on behalf of My Neighbor to Love Coalition for a preliminary Platte for lots 1 through 12, Block M, and lots 3 through 10, Block E, and the West Brainerd addition to Brainerd. The purpose of this preliminary Platte is to consolidate 11 lots into four larger lots. The proposed preliminary Platte will be contingent upon approval of an alley vacation in blocks E and M of West Brainerd addition to Brainerd by the City Council. The proposed preliminary Platte is in the traditional neighborhood two district, TN2. The proposed lots within the preliminary Platte do meet the size standards for the traditional neighborhood two district, and the proposed 12-unit apartment development does meet the density requirements for the district as well. So just as a reminder, the purpose of the TN2 zoning district is intended to provide for compact pedestrian-oriented mix of residential and neighborhood-serving commercial uses. The district reinforces the existing pattern of small connected lots, blocks, and streets, and supports development and redevelopment consistent with this pattern. So this proposed Platte, staff also believes it's supported in the comprehensive plan. Land use, goal three, support and invest in the incremental enhancements of quality of life. Policy three, ensure a wide range of housing types for all income levels. Also, economic development, goal one, support infill and redevelopment throughout Brainerd as a strategic component of growth. Policy one in there, drive infill development and redevelopment towards areas where current infrastructure is present or places where high levels of blight or disinvestment exist. So within this proposed preliminary Platte, KLD has prepared a site plan to account for drainage, water storage, and erosion while the site is under construction. The engineering department has reviewed the site plan and has no concerns. Another important aspect when looking at a preliminary Platte is the City Council, do they deem the subdivision is not premature? So with this, this is an existing Platte within the city where the required infrastructure for development is already present. All utilities, including water, sewer, and electrical, are already in place. As part of this, the fire department did review this Platte, noting that there would have to be additional fire hydrants installed along this that would be part of the developer's cost in this. As of writing this, the community development department has not received any questions or concerns about this request. Staff does recommend approval of this preliminary Platte with the following conditions: approval of the preliminary Platte is contingent upon City Council approval of the alley vacation in blocks E and M, West Brainerd addition to Brainerd, a developer's agreement for stormwater retention, and installation of required fire hydrants are recorded with the final Platte. And also, a couple adjustments to the Platte itself. We'd have to have a Platte name, and then adjusting the rear yard setback minimum indicated on the Platte, just a minor adjustment to the TN2 district standards for that. So with that, I'll open up questions to the Planning Commission. The applicant is present, as well as a representative from KLD, the engineering firm on the project.
Thank you, Director Kramvik. Any questions of staff? Director Kramvik, I might add, housing goal one, policies two and five as from our comp plan. Policy two is to expand homeownership and rental opportunities through rehabilitation and new construction. I do believe that this proposed Platte addresses that. And policy five, ensure an adequate supply of quality and affordable housing units for current and future residents. I do believe that that aspect of our comp plan supports this particular proposal as well. Question on the naming of the Platte. I see Creekside Community Development. Is that, can you help us understand what specifically you're looking for in the naming, please?
Yep, so that certainly could be used. It would be Creekside Community Development addition to West Brainerd.
Got it.
So it does have to be an addition and then to West Brainerd.
Got it, thank you.
Yep.
And then specifically for the rear yard setback, we are looking for that to be clearly stated as 10 feet and not 1, I think, on.
Yep, that's correct.
So maybe some specificity on that recommendation. All right, any other questions of staff? Otherwise, I think we will go to public hearing, and we will open the public hearing at 6:07. And at this point in time, we would invite Ms. Kenny up to, if you could, to discuss your proposal, your proposed preliminary Platte with the council and/or the commission, and any points that you'd care to make in addition. And by the way, welcome back. It's nice to have you again.
You did say don't stick with it, so I took your advice. So, I mean, if you have any other questions, the reason we wanted to divide it this way.
Sorry, if you would, state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Vicki Kenny, Lakeshore, Minnesota.
Thank you.
Okay. The reason for developing the, dividing it like we are is because we've had some challenges with this property in that Second Street is not a viable street, being it's not to state code, so we weren't able to build on Second Street and access that side. Half of our property would be rendered useless then for building. So that's really one of the reasons why we chose to look at it and find a better way to develop the property. With, you know, one building per lot, we kind of had to think east-west and combine those lots that way. So that's pretty much our reasoning of why we wanted to do this and try to make the most efficient use of the property. This is actually probably site plan number seven, but I think we've got it down, so.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Mr. Gorham, please.
I may be jumping ahead. I was a little confused. You're building one apartment, one building for 12 apartments now, and then another 12 later?
That's our goal. We originally wanted to come in and, you know, apply for two CUPs, but realistically and financially, it would take a miracle in one year to start on the second 12-plex. So we thought, why waste the money on the application? Let's just wait until we get a little bit closer, get one work done, and then we can come back for the second.
And that'll, well, that'll be a relevant question, I think, for the conditional use permit that will follow, if that's okay. We'll be dealing with the preliminary Platte at the moment.
Well, I just want to ask for the location. Is the location of the second apartment building, is it to the south or is it to the north?
It's to the north, I mean, to the south. We'd like to start in the north.
That's all I was looking for. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Other questions of the applicant?
Thank you.
One more, if I may.
Sure.
In the naming of the Platte, traditionally with the namings, it goes after the person who has been developing it. So I was wondering if you had considered the Kenny addition.
Well, can we keep Creekside Community? Because it really is a coalition. I'm the mouth, but everybody has really worked hard to make this happen. Thank you. That's awfully honoring, but if we could do Creekside Community, because it is a collaborative effort.
Thanks.
Thank you, though, Teresa.
Other questions of the applicant? Hearing none. Thank you, Ms. Kenny, if you'll be available for additional follow-up. At this time, we'd like to open up the floor to folks that would like to make comment on the application for preliminary Platte before us this evening. Is there anyone that would care to speak to this issue? If you will state your name and address.
TJ Lake, 8107 Interlock and Road, Lakeshore. And we have property on James Street between Second and Third that adjoins My Neighbor to Love Coalition. So we just wanted to be here and speak in favor of, we think, everything that they're moving forward with looks great and that they have our vote for all this, as far as hopefully you think this all through. And, I mean, we have no complaint at all with any of this, and hope to get the alley vacated, because that will go through ours otherwise, too, which we don't want, so.
Thank you, Ms. Blake. Is there anyone else that would care to speak to the preliminary Platte before us this evening? Anyone else that would care to speak to the preliminary Platte before us this evening? All right, well, hearing none. Yes, please. And state your name and address for the record, please.
Stephanie Pawnee, Scenic River Drive, Bax. And I just want to voice strong support for creating a pathway to permanent housing for homeless. I was just talking with a landlord who was able to finally evict his renter that had been unable to pay rent. And he was predicting that with the end of the COVID moratorium or whatever, that there's going to be an increasing numbers of people who are evicted out of their housing. And so I just think there's such a need in our community. And this model has been proven effective, everything that's part of this plan, which hasn't really been talked about here, but it's been proven effective around the country. So, and I've talked to lots of people who really are in support of this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would care to speak to the preliminary Platte before us this evening? All right, hearing none. We are going to close the public hearing at 6:12 and move this back to the commission for discussion. Members of the commission, thoughts?
Mr. Chair, the setback, thank you, the setback, the rear yard setback minimum, you had mentioned 10. Can you or James speak to that? What's the, why is 10 the magic number and not another number? Just curious what the background of that number was.
Where that number comes from? Mr. Kramvik, could you address that, please?
Yep, so within the Platte, they put up the TN2 district standards, and the rear yard setback for primary structures, I believe, is 10 feet on there. So that's just to clean up the Platte on there and to correct the dimensional standards for the TN2 district.
So it is addressing a typo on the existing.
Thank you.
That was submitted. Other discussion? Director Kramvik, did the applicant come to a pre-application meeting with you, or was that step not necessary?
Not necessary. She did, the applicant did meet with the city engineer, city administrator, myself, to kind of look at preliminary view of things, but, you know, maybe not a formal meeting.
Could you share maybe the general discussion and any recommendations and things there? And that we see those carried forward into what we're looking at this evening?
Yeah, I know one important aspect from the community development department was that has a, have a strong understanding that these should meet the density requirements within the TN2 district. So I know that was an important, important aspect within our department that, you know, that's kind of part of the next CUP part of it, but needing an overall plan to meet density requirements within the TN2 district neighborhood. We did also look at the double frontage lots on there, which is something that typically you wouldn't want to do within a Platte, but we did look at with the city engineer that Northwest Second Street was really never going to be developed. You already have double frontage lots on the other side, and there is a provision in there that really, if it's not necessary, you could still do a double frontage lot in there. So we worked through that. And then also worked through within the Platte how things are going to be sized based on the setback requirements within the TN2 district. So those are some of the main issues that we looked at. And then the other big one that the city engineer was speaking with the developer, the applicant, on was stormwater retention and the requirements that were going to be required as part of the MS4 permit for the city of Brainerd and obtaining the proper, proper permit from the state of Minnesota, the MPCA.
Great. Thank you, James. Any other discussion? Otherwise, I'd be looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Erickson.
I will take a stab at the motion, then. So I would move to recommend approval of the preliminary Platte with the following three conditions. One, approval of the preliminary Platte is contingent upon City Council approval of the alley vacation in Block E and M, West Brainerd addition to Brainerd. Two, that a developer's agreement for stormwater retention and installation of required fire hydrants are recorded with the final Platte. And three, that adjust the naming of the Platte to be the Creekside Community Development addition to Brainerd, and that the rear yard setback minimum indicated on the Platte be 10 feet.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson. Question on the name. Would you be open to the applicant working with staff, maybe, to finalize that?
Yeah, that's fine. I actually intended to ask if that needed to be a part of it, so I would amend the motion to the applicant working with staff to create the appropriate naming of the Platte.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second with the amendment.
Woodward, second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. And that motion carries. Director Kramvik, next steps for the applicant, please.
Yeah, so the preliminary Platte will be heard for a final vote from City Council on November 7. This is a preliminary Platte, so there will be a final Platte process as well, but for the preliminary Platte purposes, it will be heard by City Council on November 7.
Thank you. And I suppose, given that these are a package, we'll probably run that one, do that one more time at the end of the packet. We're on to item 7B on the agenda. That's consideration of a conditional use permit for the construction of a 12-unit multifamily apartment building on Northwest Third Street. Director Kramvik, can you set that up for us, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Vicki Kenny has submitted a request on behalf of My Neighbor to Love Coalition for a conditional use permit for lots 1 through 10, Block M, West Brainerd addition to Brainerd. The purpose of this conditional use permit request is to construct a residential 12-unit multifamily apartment building. The conditional use permit is subject to City Council approval of a final Platte for this block. The proposed lot is listed as Lot 1, Block 1 in the proposed Platte. Lot 1, Block 1 in the proposed Platte is located in TN2 Traditional Neighborhood 2 District, which permits the construction of multifamily attached dwelling units 5-plus as a conditional use. All of the applicant's proposed units meet the size requirements for multifamily dwellings. There's efficiency units, two bedrooms, along with three-bedroom units. The proposed lot includes 12 units on a 53,700 square foot property, which equates to a 9.73 dwelling unit per acre number. So this number is within range of the density requirements of the TN2 district, which is 9 to 20. 20-plus would require a CUP. The applicant is proposing 27 parking spaces, which meets the zoning requirement of 2 and 1/4 spaces per unit. The applicant has also proposed plantings along Northwest Third Street. There is not a planting requirement along the north side of the parking lot because it is adjacent to Jackson Street, which is unimproved and really not planned to ever be improved. So it does meet the screening requirement for parking lots. There's also a landscape requirement of four shrubs per unit, which the plan meets. The tree requirement for the property is 14 trees. Typically, we wouldn't require this in a landscape plan, especially in a redevelopment site like this, because there is an option for mature trees to remain on site and count towards that number, but there is a required inspection before certificate of occupancy that it does meet the required tree standard. So with this conditional use permit application, staff believes it does meet the requirements of the comprehensive plan. Economic development, goal one, support infill and redevelopment through Brainerd as a strategic component of growth. Drive infill, policy one, drive infill development and redevelopment towards areas where current infrastructure is present or places where high levels of blight or disinvestment exist. As of this writing, no one has contacted the community development department with concerns about the conditional use permit for the 12-unit multifamily apartment. Staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit for construction of a 12-unit multifamily apartment at Lot 1, Block 1 in the proposed Platte, which is currently, pin number is 41040505, 41040504, 41040503, contingent upon City Council approval of the final Platte for this block. And with that, I'll open it up to questions for the Planning Commission, and the applicant is obviously here for questions as well.
Thank you, Director Kramvik. Questions of staff?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Gorham, please.
About the trees, there are some really lovely mature trees on the property that I think deserve sticking around. Has there been consideration, or is the basic plan to come in and bulldoze it, start over? What's the notion?
I have talked to the applicant about that, and she could possibly clarify as well. She would love to, I believe, leave as many trees as possible. I know there's a lot of grading issues on site, some really low areas that have to be graded out, so I know that's going to be an issue. You can't really cover up the color of the tree, or essentially would kill the tree at that point. So areas where, you know, extensive grading is going to have to take place, I don't know if there's really an option to save those trees, but I know she is interested in saving as many as possible on site.
Is there a follow-up question?
Yep.
Is there consideration for the soil type? It's a really unique area in West Brainerd. It's Jackmine Savannah. The topsoil naturally is about maybe two inches thick, and that's it, and it's sand after that. And anybody who lives in West Brainerd knows it's a challenge to grow things, because you're growing things on sand. Is there some consideration of that in the plan at all, or is that?
And that's something maybe the applicant can answer, but yeah, for growing purposes, trees would certainly need to be planted with topsoil, pretty much similar to any place in Brainerd. And then to grow grass, you would need some topsoil as well.
Thank you.
Other questions of staff? Mr. Erickson, please.
Thank you. James, so the request here is for, partially for the boarding house use. Can you talk about, so that is an approved use within this zoning by conditional use?
So the boarding house is going to be the next conditional use permit. This is just for the 12-plex.
Okay.
Yep.
Sorry, thank you. I'll hold that one.
Other questions of staff? Director Kramvik, related to the conversation with the preliminary Platte, that these are double-fronted lots, would the parking lot also need to have plantings along Northwest Second Street as well? The proposal, I believe, shows that they would maintain a buffer of trees, but for reasons of the discussion with Mr. Gorham, that Mr. Gorham raised here that should those trees fail because of the degree of disturbance, would we not need to have trees on that, screening on that parking lot to the east as well?
You know, again, an unimproved street, so, you know, what's a street versus an unimproved street? Certainly, there could be a condition added to that to take into account neighbors across Northwest Second Street, so that could be a condition added. But that's how staff looked at it, is that a public street is something that is improved versus something that is treated more like an alley.
Thank you. And then, similar to my comments with the preliminary Platte, I think the findings of fact should indicate that the comprehensive plan, housing goal one, policies two and five would be applicable to this particular conditional use permit application as well. So with that, any further comments of staff? Yes, Mr. Gorham, please.
Maybe we'll get into this later, but about the drainage. When I walked the site over the weekend, I noticed there is drainage to the north. Everything goes down, and there's a city culvert that goes into a wetland. Will this be part of that system, or is that, will the drainage plan not include that, follow that?
So there is certainly a number of retention ponds on site to treat drainage, drainage on site. Where exactly it goes from there, there are developer's agreements that'll have to be met with the city, so that part is coordinated with our storm system. But the KLD, who put the engineering plans together, may be able to answer that part of the question for you.
Okay.
So we went a whole two of yours for.
Exactly.
We're just on the. Yes, Mr. Erickson, please.
I'll try another one. James, lighting, can you just talk about that or describe that a little bit? Is that handled here in this, something we need to add, or is that handled with the, like, the underlying zoning?
It would be handled under the underlying zoning. When I did ask the applicant about lighting, and the applicant could answer questions on this, at this time, there's no parking lot lighting that's requested in there. If there were parking lot lighting that were to be added, it would have to meet the residential standards.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Questions of staff? Hearing none, we will open the public hearing at 6:26 and invite Ms. Kenny to approach. And if you could, again, identify yourself and your address, and if you could, you've heard a couple of questions here, so if you would identify yourself.
Vicki Kenny, Lakeshore, Minnesota. First question of trees. I hear you there, because, you know, when they just cut down some of the trees for the other development, I just wanted to cry. So as many trees as we can possibly say we will. But the truth is, I know this property is extremely hilly, highs and lows, and it's going to be challenging to get it level so that we can build on it. But every possible way to save trees will be saved. And for planting, our goal is to eventually turn this more into a kind of a food forest area, so more permaculture area. So we would like to do a lot of tree planting, apple trees, plum trees, pear trees, that kind of thing. So, you know, we want it to be a very lush garden-like neighborhood, so.
Very good. And are there other aspects of the proposal before us that you'd like to highlight to us or address or draw attention to specifically?
Oh, I know, there's probably so much already in the packet, other than that we have studio units and two-bedroom and three-bedroom units, laundry, storage area. So we're trying to accommodate both families and single people or small families.
Thank you.
It's a unique design, intentionally.
Yes.
I know, people ask about that, but we're trying to not just create box-style apartment housing, we're trying to create a neighborhood. And because we can only have one building per lot, this is kind of a compromise to keep that neighborhood filled with front porches and still have one building.
Very creative. Questions of the applicant? Ms. Woodward.
Have you considered working with the arboretum or other places for some of the infill so that you could infill with composting material and be able to create that garden? Otherwise, it's not going to grow.
Oh, great suggestion. We already actually have a couple piles of compost that we'd like to move for the current property that we're developing, you know, fairly soon, so it'll be ready by spring, so we don't have to wait for spring to have that moved. So we do have plans for the current one, but that's a great idea, because I'm thinking we're going to need a whole lot more. So, yeah, great idea. And for tree planting, we know it's just sand out there. So even with trees and digging holes and planting them, we are going to have to fill those up with a lot of black dirt and good material.
Other questions? Mr. Gorham, please.
I have to defend the sand. I think it's beautiful in the Jackmine Savannah. I'm just saying.
It really is. I always want to save some for a sandbox. There's a couple spots. It's like, ooh.
It's exactly the type of landscape that's very rare in Minnesota. There's just a strip that kind of goes across the state of the Jackmine Savannah. So it is very interesting. Back to the apartments. Do you expect them to rent at market value, at below-market value? Where do you expect them to land?
I know this is not really pertinent for the CUP, but just to answer your question, we are looking at below-market value.
Okay.
Other questions of the applicant? Ms. Kenny, your proposal specifically says that you're not planning to install lighting in the parking lots, and I just wanted to just touch base a bit about, do you think that some modest and respectful lighting would be desirable for the parking lots? You know, maybe motion sensor, dimmers, or timers, or things like that? Have you,
we've talked.
Are you entirely wanting to rule that out, or do you want to build it in at the CUP time?
At this point, we have no plans for parking lot lighting. More than likely, we'll be putting on sensor lightings on the housing units themselves for, you know, emotion detectors and sensing that way. So I don't anticipate the parking lot to be full. If it becomes an issue and we feel like we do need lighting down the road, then that's something that we'll address with the city and have a plan for that. I personally don't like a lot of... I personally don't like a lot of bright lights shining, it kind of messes with the circadian rhythms. So if we don't need it, we're not going to put it in, but if we find that we do, we'll definitely approach the city and apply for that.
I'm not a super advocate of parking lot lighting. At the same time, when I think you're, you've got like 60 feet of, I'm trying to do quick math here, and that's not my skill, but about maybe 60 feet of distance between the far end of the parking lot and some of the front porches of some of the units, and so that's a fair distance, and whether you might want to include that opportunity to have that now. But if you're, I'm not here to twist your arm, I'm not an advocate of parking lot lighting, just splashed all over, but I just want to just check in with you that that, in fact, is your desire before we move forward with the conditional use permit.
At this time, we can move forward, as long as it's an option to add if we find that we do need it, and I believe that it is.
Questions of the applicant? All right, with none, thank you, Ms. Kinney. If you can be available for follow-up if necessary. At this point in time, we'll be asking if anyone else in the audience would care to speak on the conditional use permit that we're considering right at this moment for a 12-unit multifamily apartment building. Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission on the conditional use permit before us this evening? And last call, anyone want to address the commission on this application before us? Seeing none, I am going to close the public hearing at 6:32 and move the discussion back to the commission.
Terminology right here.
While you're doing that, could I ask a question of staff? I know...
Are you ready to...
Oh, go ahead.
Right, Mr. Erickson, please.
Thank you. So, James, I should have asked this earlier, but has, I'm just thinking about emergency services with this design, is that something we would need to include in the conditions that this is reviewed by the police or fire department? Or just thinking about getting emergency services back, you know, into these properties in the event of an emergency? Can you direct us on that?
Yeah, so, the fire department and building department will have to have a final review on this. I believe a sprinkler system is going to be required for a building like this, which was indicated by the building official and fire department, that can really be a part of the building process. The fire department did look at the overall concept plan for the 12-unit apartment here. They did say that the driveway was wide enough and did not have any concerns about the parking lot. So they did have an initial review on the CUP here.
Thank you. And then just a really quick follow-up.
Yes, Mr. Erickson.
It sounds like that's going to be, they've reviewed it already, and then it wouldn't need to be included in the motion, it would just be part of the...
That part would not have to be included.
Thanks.
Yep.
Thank you. Ms. Woodward.
On the, if we approve the conditional use permit for blocks 1 through 10 on Block M, does that follow through after the preliminary plat renaming? Does it, it follows the land, it doesn't follow the...
It doesn't follow what we have now. In other words, if we change, if we go, I'm out of order here, but if we change the plat, we have to have different block numbers.
Okay.
I think.
So the question is...
The CUP is going to follow it, right?
Correct. So if, the conditional use permit is subject to city council approval of the final plat for the block, and then the new platted block is going to be Lot 1, Block 1, and it's going to not reference lots 1 through 10 and Block M, because that will be overwritten, I guess, in a visual sense by the new plat. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So we're approving a conditional use of the, subject to the approved final plat, and that reference will be Lot 1, Block 1 of the approved final plat.
Okay, and then the entire...
If I could clarify...
Yes, please.
Within the staff recommendation, I did put that Lot 1, Block 1 in there, but also put the pin numbers in there of what it currently is for the staff recommendation.
Okay.
Just so we had some clarification on, but those pin numbers will change as well.
All right.
Are you ready for the...
I may not be the person to articulate this motion.
Focus, focus.
Still got to add more.
All right, any other discussion on the conditional use permit? Yes, Mr. Gorham, please.
I think, I didn't quite buy into the notion that trees on North Second weren't important either. Like, it was stated earlier, I think the trees on North Second are important, whether that's a street or not, that's a place where people walk as part of the neighborhood. So I would like to see us include a requirement for trees on North Second.
You're advocating that the parking lot standard apply to the other front even though it's considered by staff an unimproved street?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we would want to...
I mean, that may be addressing it as a public space rather than just as a street.
Yeah, exactly.
And, Mr. Gorham, I lost track of, and I apologize, and the question about the stormwater...
Stormwater, where the stormwater is going. Do we have a member of the engineer? I guess we do.
Yeah, if we could, you know, this is...
Can I open up the public hearing again, or can I speak?
If you'll speak, I think would be good, so thank you very much. If you could introduce yourself and address the question.
My name is Jim Kramer with Kramer Lee Staleo. The stormwater actually is designed to MS4 standards, which that standard basically is that we're to retain all the stormwater on site, which is actually a somewhat restrictive standard in comparison to most cities in the state of Minnesota. If this site were to become inundated with water, as an example, the site would discharge to the northeast. There is an existing stormwater pond to the northeast across Jackson and across Second. That actual stormwater pond was constructed with the development of Trump Highway 210 back in the 90s. That pond actually, if it gets too full, discharges to the Mississippi River.
To Mississippi Creek.
Yeah, in a manner of speaking. But it's basically set up, at least almost at a 100-year storm event, to retain all the water on site, and that is kind of the goal of MS4 standards, is to try to retain the water on site so it can be treated before it goes down into any protected waterway.
Question for, the next question would be, given the sandy nature of the soil, do you think it's, is it going to help you, or is it, or does it hurt you in terms of trying to retain the water, in terms of the soil being so porous?
Percolation on that type of soil is typically very high. It can take a lot of water. We did have soil borings done on the site, down to about eight feet, nine feet, which it's similar soil types. It gets a little silty under that, which is probably based on a lot of historic flooding from the Mississippi River, it's over many, many years. This soil will take a lot of water, and as I mentioned before, this is really designed to hold a lot of water. We'd have to have a mega storm event to have any water issues on this site, but if that would happen, this would probably be one of the smaller problems the city of Brainerd would have, but the water would discharge to the other stormwater pond and then ultimately out to the Mississippi River. Thank you. All right, any other questions?
Other questions on stormwater-related issues? Thank you very much, Mr. Gorham, for coming forward. Any other discussion on the application? Yeah, Mr. Erickson, please.
Yes, I'd like to revisit the lighting. I had asked about that, you brought that up. I'd like to how you phrase it, if I get this right, but modest and respectful lighting, I know that's a conversation we've had more broadly with the planning commission in regards to the city and other residential lighting. I guess I wouldn't mind seeing some of that modest and respectful lighting being as a condition. It sounds like the applicant's open to considering that, and, so I don't, I guess I'll leave my comments there. I don't know, James mentioned it would have to be just to our current residential standards, so what are your, are others thoughts on including that?
You know, thank you, and, you know, the standard is a maximum, so, you know, footpath lighting would be less than 13 feet high, you know, general illumination like that for guideposts and things, or how it's handled and directed on the site, you know. So it would have to not be exceeding 13 feet for the residential standard unless the higher standard is used, then the fixtures have to be recessed and contained within the property boundaries. But you can go with much more modest. What that involves for the applicant would be, you know, laying infrastructure ahead of time, if you would, right? You'd have to put the wiring and such out before you lay your asphalt and such, so...
I don't mean to encumber the applicant with further additional work like that, but I do like the notion of having some of the lighting, you know, given the size of it, 12-plex unit. I like how you've described that, but I'm just trying to think of how we might articulate that for, is it a matter of just maybe having them work with staff on...
I think that would be one fair way to do it. Is there, are there other perspectives on that? I think you had opened to other members to maybe comment, so maybe we could, maybe we could hear others on that. Mr. Gorham?
Well, it's tricky balance, because we want to both respect the, we want to create a safe environment at the same time respecting the sanctity of the place. And I'm not sure how we get there, but I think that's the balance that you're trying to shoot for, make it safe but not feeling like you're living in a parking lot.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, absolutely, I would agree with that.
Ms. Woodward, do you have thoughts?
Is there street lighting in the area? I didn't, okay.
There's one light at the, at the far north end of Northwest Second, illuminating basically the lift station for the city's cemetery sewer, and I think the others would be over towards the roundabout. James, do you see any others in your mental mind map as you drive around, or...
I don't believe so.
Yeah.
Well, I guess it's, I'm of the stance where I don't want to further encumber the plans with anything that they, if they feel that the lighting on the building is going to be sufficient, I think that there are enough hands in the pot, so to speak, enough people working on this, that they have a fairly good feel of the atmosphere that they want to create, and I would be inclined to not put further restrictions on it. Or further conditions, I guess.
And to be clear, the 13-foot or less lighting standard is by right. If you exceed that, then you're looking to, then you need to meet the other standards. That lighting is by right, it's not by conditional use, and it's, so the applicant could come back later, you know, and add lighting that is consistent with the standard for residential.
Okay.
Without having to go through.
Very good.
If for any reason the commission wanted to say that 13, less than 13 would be preferred, this might be the way to, the opportunity, not the way, but the opportunity to condition that in. I don't know that we're...
That be necessary?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we're boxing them out of coming back later. It's the expense of putting in infrastructure after the fact, running wires after you've already finished your grading and finished your asphalt and...
No, that, Mr. Chair, thank you, that's helpful. I guess I could leave it off. Hearing the applicant say that that's a consideration, and knowing that they would be able to do that, like you said, as up to 13 feet, that's no problem. I do have another question, if I could, about the trees for perhaps Commissioner Gorham. Is that, what kind of specificity do we want to get into? Because I heard you say trees along there, and I'm not opposed to that, but again, for purposes of motion, help me with...
Yeah, and maybe I might turn to staff there. What would be an analogy? What would be another property that would be similar? I'm trying to think, it wouldn't be a parking lot standard, what would we have for a regular apartment building?
Really, there's a, the requirement for trees is one deciduous tree in the front yard, so that's really the only requirement we have, and then we have a certain number of trees on the property. So if you do want to see additional trees on that side, you would have to put that into the conditional use.
Okay. I'm just trying to think, I want to do something that's not cumbersome, but it's not, but also, we note it, so I'm just kind of, how many, how many front yards do we have? How many yards do we have here? Do we count this as one yard?
So I looked at it as two front yards, one on each side, because it's a double-frontage lot, so for sure, one deciduous tree would have to be planted on Northwest Third, one would have to be planted on Northwest Second, and then the other trees could be distributed throughout the site. That's how the code reads.
All right.
So certainly, there could be added trees to maybe buffer along the neighborhood there. You could have a specific, you know, maybe specify a deciduous tree every 30 feet, something like that, of the property, every 50 feet.
And it also, I mean, we can work with what's there. I mean, say, if there are existing trees...
That would count towards it.
There's no reason to make the applicant plant new trees if there's existing trees. So, maybe I'm not helping, but I'm trying to come up with some notion that we're trying to encourage it, but not make it some onerous requirement that they have to do. I don't know if I'm helping or hurting, but...
Chair, just to further the conversation, then?
Yes.
So it sounds like one tree would be required on each side, then, just be a matter if we wanted to, by condition, require them to do more, knowing that there already may be more there.
Right, if we say, if we say there's two, if there's two front yards, we're talking four trees, that doesn't seem too major, right? Ask for, unless somebody else has another idea.
If I could weigh in, what do you, what do you mean by tree? Are you talking about a canopy tree, you know, boulevard kind of a tree? Are you talking about a midsize...
I'm not talking shrub, I'm talking, I'm talking a real live boulevard tree, I guess.
A 20-foot-high tree, a 40, 60-foot-high tree, you know what I mean?
Yeah, looking for a standard here.
What is, what is your vision that you're trying to get to?
All I'm really trying to say is that we shouldn't just blow off Second Street, Northwest Second, and say, ah, nobody lives there, we don't have to care about it, because it is part of the neighborhood and part of the Tyrell Hills neighborhood, and it'd be worthy of having a little respect towards the Tyrell Hills neighborhood, but I don't think it's a major issue. I think we, I could probably live with one tree per lot.
Mr. Erickson?
I'll add, too, the applicant's talked about, you know, their intent to plant apple trees, pear trees, that, things of that nature, too, so I don't know if that's along that area or in the interior, but I think they've already indicated that they would be planting trees, too, so I, given the requirement, their intent, and the trees that are already there, I don't disagree with it, it'd be nice to have those trees, but I don't know that it needs to be a condition.
All right, I'm fine with that, that's not a, not a major point.
Brent, would you be able to project this image from this particular package just for a minute to help us focus the tree discussion here? So I think the applicant has proposed a key on this drawing about where they would be putting deciduous trees, fruit-bearing trees, and shrubs. The smallest icon there is shrubs, the midpoint is the fruit-bearing trees, the apples, pears, and then the one large, well, they got a conifer added there as well on the third northwest Third Street.
The north is to the left, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And just to clarify in here, there are enough shrubs in here, but there are not enough tree plantings in here, so it would be required to meet city code in here, and I did specify that in here, the number of trees, and then, they do have one tree, one deciduous tree planted on either side, so that does meet the code, but there would have to be other trees in here. But because of the nature of the lot, and potentially saving trees, we don't know where those are going to be, I didn't look to have a finalized tree plan in here.
I can live with the plan as is, I'm not, I don't need to die on this hill.
So we've had, you know, discussion on tree plantings on, on the east side of the parking lot facing Northwest Second. We had conversation around lighting, and then we had broader conversation about tree plantings along the, the northwest, the, the property boundary, I think, is sort of where this, this conversation was at here. For the east side of that lot. So is there any other issues that we want to address, or bring up, or discuss here before we look for a motion to try and pull all this together? Otherwise, I'd be looking for a motion crafter to put all that together into something.
Ted?
Well, so yeah, to clarify, so, I mean, I'm hearing that we really aren't adding lighting as a condition, the trees as a condition, so I'm not hearing that we really have any other conditions, other than contingent upon council approval of the, the final plat, is that?
We did, we did talk about the, applying the parking lot standard to the second, Northwest Second Street side of the parking lot, as well as how it's proposed now on the Northwest Third Street side.
The landscaping standard.
The landscaping standard for parking lots. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, so help me, remind me on where that was, so applying the, as I'm working through crafting a motion here, take a stab at it. Applying the landscaping parking lot standards to which portion?
To, to the Northwest Second side of the parking lot, or the east side of the parking lot, in addition.
Okay, so that Northwest Second's the east side, okay.
You gotta, you gotta look at it like this, dude.
All right, I, well, so I'll, I'll take a stab, then. So staff, I'd make the motion to recommend approval of the conditional use permit for construction of a twelve-unit multifamily apartment at Lot, Lot One, Block One, in the proposed plat. Existing PIN numbers four-one-zero-four-oh-five-oh-five, four-one-oh-four-oh-five-oh-four, four-one-oh-four-oh-five-oh-three. Contingent upon city council approval of the final plat for this block, with the condition that parking lot landscaping standards be applied to North Second Street on the east side. Any amendments?
Second.
Motion by Erickson, and a second by Woodward. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. That motion carries. We will move to item seven C, a consideration of a conditional use permit for the operation of a boarding house at Northwest Third Street. Director Kramvik, can you set that up for us, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Vicky Kenny, I submitted a request on behalf of My Neighbor to Love Coalition for a conditional use permit for lots one through six, and lots ten through twelve, Block M, West Brainerd, addition to Brainerd. The purpose of this conditional use permit request is to operate a boarding house on the second floor above a health center. So in the preliminary, proposed preliminary plat, this would be Lot Two, Block One, which is located in the traditional neighborhood two district, which permits the operation of boarding houses as a conditional use. Health centers are a permitted use. So the proposed structure does meet all set record requirements of the TN2 district. The applicant is proposing up to four rooms with the boarding house, which would require six parking spaces. And then with the health center, there is one space per two exercise stations that are required, so the facility would need a total of ten parking spaces. So the applicant, with this conditional use permit request, is asking for a parking deferment to eliminate two of the required parking spaces. In order for this, to summarize, the applicant does need to demonstrate that the proposed use will have a peak parking demand, less than the required parking as defined in the applicable section. In no case shall the amount of parking provided be less than one-half of the amount of parking required in this ordinance, and the site has sufficient property under the same ownership to accommodate the expansion of the parking facilities to meet the minimum requirements. So with this, staff does believe the property meets the requirements for a parking deferment of up to two spaces. For the health club, the health club is required to have four parking spaces. The facility will be used by adjoining multifamily residential properties, which does have an extensive number of parking spaces. The amount of parking deferment is not more than one-half of the required parking, and the site can account for additional spaces if necessary, and that has been shown in the landscape sketch plan. So with that, with the landscape portion of this, a six-foot-high fence or landscape screen provided eighty percent year-round opacity shall be required whenever a non-residential use abuts directly upon land zone for purposes of residential. You'll see in that parking lot there, that, on the side, that would be a budding, the twelve-plex, there is a proposed six-foot-high landscape screen. The slot is also required to have a total of ten trees, much like the other CUP. Staff did not require a finalized plan with this, but it will have to meet all requirements of the tree planting within the zoning ordinance. The proposed, within this, the proposed use shall preserve the objectives of the ordinance, and shall be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Again, staff believes economic development goal one, support infill and redevelopment throughout Brainerd as a strategic component of growth. Policy one, drive infill development and redevelopment towards areas where current infrastructure is present, and places where high levels of blight and dis-investment exist, does meet the comprehensive plan. As of writing this, no one has contacted the community development department with concerns about the conditional use permit application for the boarding house. So staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit for the operation of boarding house on lots two, Block One, of the proposed plat, which is PIN numbers four-one-zero-four-oh-five-oh-five, four-one-zero-four-oh-five-oh-one, four-one-zero-four-oh-five-oh-two, four-one-zero-four-oh-five-oh-three, which is contingent upon city council approval of the final plat for this block, and the applicant and the city must enter into a development agreement to be recorded against the subject property, which includes a clause requiring the owner to install the additional parking stalls upon a finding of the city that such additional parking stalls are necessary to accommodate the use. And that part of it is directly taken out of the deferred parking portion of the city code. So with that, I will open up for any questions from the planning commission. The applicant is also here to answer questions.
Thank you, Director Kramvik. Questions of staff?
I do.
Mr. Erickson, please.
So this is my question I had earlier, so the boarding house use, can you talk about what, like, that's an allowed use in this underlying zoning by conditional use? Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct. So the boarding house is a conditional use in the TN2, where the health center is a permitted use. Both of them are listed as commercial uses in our allowed uses table. You know, so with that, the, the health center, as proposed, I think has four workout stations, as well as a dietary center, and a mental health station as well.
Just a follow-up, then, so the-
Erickson, please.
The health component of this is by, I would say, by right, or by administrative? But the, the boarding house is the part that needs the conditional use permitting?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Other questions of staff? Director Kramvik, similar to the previous, our comprehensive plan housing goal one, policy five, I think, ensure an adequate supply of quality and affordable housing units for current and future residents, is supported, this, or supports this conditional use permit. I'm grateful that the chair doesn't have to make motions, because this one's really, really, really awkward. So I'm, I'm looking for the art on this one. So I think at this point in time, any further questions of staff? We will go to public hearing at seven o'clock, and Ms. Kenny, if we can invite you up yet again, you're going to get your, your, your aerobics exercises in such a-
Okay, Vicky Kenny, Lake Sherman, Minnesota.
If you could tell us a bit about, or direct us in your proposal here about-
Okay. Originally, we called this building a community center, but it was creating such confusion with the public, because a community center is usually a public type of building, and this is really meant for Creekside community, just local residents. And then, of course, opening it up to different classes that we'd like, you know, invite the public in once in a while. So we changed it, we thought, what is this really about? And so we decided it was really about holistic health. So we're looking at physical health, mental health, relationship health, financial health. So we, you know, decided to do a health center instead. And it just made sense for us, with that type of a development that we're doing, that it's going to take a while to build these units, so we would like to be able to house people, you know, while they're waiting, so it made sense to put a boarding house. Just practical use of the building, and better use of the main space. The layout is not going to be exactly like that. We would like to do a little bit more changing, but that gives you a general idea. It was more about how to show that we can fit different rooms, but, yeah.
Thank you. Questions of the applicant? Mr. Erickson, please.
Yeah, more of a comment, you really answered my question, but that was what I, kind of where I was going with James, is the definition of boarding house, but then, you already answered this, but the boarding house use, I was going to ask if that was the same as the original intent, under kind of a new name, and I appreciate that. So again, no question, but more of a comment, you already answered. That was the question I was going to ask.
Okay.
Comment, Ms. Woodward?
I have a comment, more than a question, in relation to the, the boarding house aspect of it, and Brainerd's history, that we have such a rich history, and so many things have happened in this area. I would encourage you to reach out to Hilma Keller, who ran the boarding house in Brainerd for decades and decades, and she is still living. So she might be a wealth of information, and sometimes tying something into history like that creates a very homey and welcoming environment, when it feels like it's not just something that's cut out of new material.
I would love to talk with her, thank you.
I think she lives in Gilman now.
Okay.
Yeah.
I may have to email the, the name, or, you know, have to get it, write it down, because I don't know if I'll remember, but-
Yeah, feel free to reach out later, and I can connect you guys.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Other questions of the applicant?
How will the boarding house sort of operate? Will it work like month to month? Are people going to lease, or just out of curiosity?
You know, of course, everybody will have to pay for their stay there, and month to month, would, would, just like we'd expect for other rentals.
Will it again be like, boss, below market? Will you kind of imagine, I'm not sure what the market for a boarding house is-
Yeah, I really don't know what the market is for a boarding house, but we're, no, we're trying to, to make it affordable, affordable for people to stay, so they have a place to stay while they're waiting for their units to get built.
Will there be any requirements like sobriety, or anything like this? Because we've certainly been down the line of sobriety, sober houses, and we've talked about that. Will be anything similar to that, and how that works, or is it going to be different?
I, I know we're getting into more, more detail, but we, we do have, for the whole community, we do have a community handbook, and the application to be able to be a part of the community, there is some, some guidelines and some rules and some commitments people have to make.
That's what I was looking for.
To be a good neighbor.
That's what I was looking for, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions of the applicant? Mr. Erickson, please.
Thank you. So along those same lines of community accountability, will, and I'm struggling to remember the original application, I don't want to get into offense, but that offense, and not suggesting that there should be, again, but will this be staff? Can you talk about the staffing, and like, what accountability measures? And part of what my question is, you know, also just ensuring that, you know, the residents that are there, ensuring like a distraction-free environment, given that, you know, the purpose of this is for treatment of all manner of mental health or addiction issues. Can you talk a little bit more about that, please?
Yeah, it's, it's really not, I mean, we would definitely focus on that, but not everybody that will be living there is needing any kind of treatment. So some people are just needing a place to stay. And our goal is to have a live-in staff that would be there full-time.
Full-time, okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Kenny, I, I just would encourage, I, I, it's early for the planting lists and things like that, but I would encourage you to be, also be thinking about working evergreens in there. In addition to the, sort of the, the eye candy lilacs and dogwoods and hydrangea, you know, just to think about some evergreens in there, that would also help in being able to, to carry the, the screening effect over the wintertime and such. And I would suggest that you'd work with staff on that, rather than sit here and-
I love evergreens, I'm sure.
Pick our favorite evergreen, although I heard jackpines. Making it what it, what it used to be, so. Okay, I think at this point, thank you very much, Ms. Kenny, and I will remain available for follow-up. At this point, I'd ask anyone else that would care to speak on the conditional use permit for a boarding house here before us this evening, please approach the podium. Is there anyone that would care to speak? Yes, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Mike Carey, Brainerd, Minnesota. Could you speak a little more to the-
Mike, if you could just address the questions to us, please.
Sure, oh, sorry, I'm just curious about the, the Don's comment regarding the various policies, and just, just looking for clarity on what that handbook entails for the, for residents to live there.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would care to speak on the issues before us on the conditional use permit this evening? Is there anyone else that would care to speak to the commission on the conditional use permit before us? Ms. Kenny, if I could call you back for a moment, please?
A little taller than you.
Didn't mean to leave you hanging there.
Could, could perhaps shed some light, so that, you know, perhaps the, the bigger picture on, on what, what the guiding-
Sure.
Guidance that would guide all of the residents of this community, particularly the boarding house that we're talking about?
Yeah, one of our values, and I wish I had, I had a handbook with me, I could show it to you, our values really are about being a good neighbor, and encouraging each other to be their very best. So, so, you know, so basically, that's kind, pretty much it. So, so behaviors, you know, no, no drugs on-site, you know, those kind of things. So there's not, you know, public drunkenness, just like any other neighborhood, you know, we're expecting, and requirement of people to, to be good neighbors, and to care about each other. What we're trying to develop here is, is not just a neighborhood, but really a community. So those are some of our community values, that we are here to build each other up, know that everybody's trying to do their best, and how can we support each other? And work together as a neighbor, part of that is required neighborhood meetings once a month, so that's part of our handbook, so we want the, the neighbors to be stakeholders in their own community. So if there's an issue or a problem, we get together, and we discuss it, and we work out solutions, to try to keep people remaining in their homes, and if you have something more specific, I'd be happy to-
No, I, there was, it just sounded nonspecific, so I'll give you an opportunity to clarify.
Okay. Is that helpful, or anything, any other questions?
Do you have some follow-up on that?
And I'm assuming, at, at some level, there's consequences, if, if one doesn't follow the rules. And would consequences include having to find another place to go?
Yeah, I mean, our, our goal is to keep people housed. However, if there's somebody that's living there, and that consistently is not wanting to cooperate, is not really wanting to be in, we call it intentional living, you know, there's, not, it's not going to be for everybody, but it's going to be about wanting to be a part of this community. And if they continually don't, and show that they don't, then clearly intentional living is not really for them. And so we would want to help them find a type of housing that would be better for them. So eviction would be on the table.
Thank you, that helps.
Other questions on this topic? All right, thank you, Ms. Kenny. All right. Last call, is there anyone else that would care to speak to the commission on this conditional use permit? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing at seven-ten, and move back to discussion at the commission. Commissioners, what do we think? I think if we are to grant a parking deferment, I think we need to have some specificity about what we are deferring, how many spaces we're deferring, what is the required number of parking spots here? I'm not sure- parking spots here. I'm not sure that the generic statement that, that we're authorizing a deferment, but don't say how many, I think we want to have that detail in the motion, particularly for the aspect of if they have to, if it's later found that the additional capacity needs to be there, we need to know how many spaces that we're requiring the applicant to, to, to put in to meet the, meet the needs of the code. So, my recommendation would be that whatever motion we come together here, if we're going to issue a deferment, that we do specificity, and I would suggest something like two spaces for, deferring two spaces for a total required eight or something to that effect. Ms. Erickson?
Just respond. I was going to bring up the same, essentially the same thing to, that would help, helps clarify this, this motion as well. So, and I guess, could I direct, I have a question to direct to James on that too, about that. So, is it the two stalls, correct? So, that would be the...
That's correct.
And I know we talked about this a little bit earlier, but deferring that, that just means putting that off, in my mind, to a time where it may be required. Can you talk about that deferment they described?
Yep, that's correct. So, if the city does deem as part of the agreement that those extra parking spots are required, say there's, there's issues with street parking or any other type of parking there, the city then would be able to require those two additional parking spaces.
Ms. Erickson?
And a follow-up if I could. And so, again, we talked about this earlier, and you mentioned that this is obviously in regards to the boarding house, but given the additional stalls that are required for the 12 plaques, you feel that there are sufficient spaces for us to defer these two at this time?
That's correct.
Okay.
Other discussion, considerations? Otherwise, I'd be looking for a motion and craft it well.
I don't have to make all these motions.
Challenge, challenge one of your commissioners.
I like it, yeah. I made all the motions.
So, just for commission discussion then, so, the only, let's see here, trying to think of the other conditions that, we really haven't discussed any additional conditions on this, this piece, other than the deferment of the two stalls and contingent upon city approval of the final plat. Okay. All right, I think, I think I'll give it another shot.
Hot dog.
I'll throw one idea before you do. Just one quick idea, Mr. Chair, excuse me. Do we want to have any concern about the boarding house, such as that, that the live-in staff be maintained, or do we want to just say, they're adults, they'll figure it out? In other words, should we just leave it alone and figure out that they're reasonable people, and they'll run a boarding house in a reasonable way, or do we want to consider anything on that?
I believe the, if I may, Mr. Chair, I believe the condition that we put on the warming house is that if there is a recommendation from the police department that the city council can revoke, right?
In other words, take the thing from the, that condition from the warming house and bring it over here to the boarding house? Is that what you're kind of saying? They'd take that same idea that if there is a specific complaint to the police department, they may bring it to the city council?
Or if there are, yeah, if there are continued complaints, then it can be brought to the city council for review.
Yeah. That's a thought.
Yeah, if I might suggest the important difference between those. One was an interim use permit, and a conditional use permit is, is different. An interim use is time-bound. A conditional use basically travels with the...
With the property.
Property.
So, should another owner come in, then it would be nice to have the condition on there that it could be revoked?
I would like to look to staff to maybe get a little bit of guidance on, on whether you could have a closure clause, if you would.
So, with all conditional use permits, if they are not meeting one of the conditions, it can be brought back before planning commission and council for review. It does work a bit better with the interim use permit. The other thing to look at here is the warming shelter is more of a shelter versus this is housing. So, may not be able to put a, the same type of stipulation that we, for a particular housing type versus, you know, would this be put on any other type of boarding house? So, with the Federal Fair Housing Act, we'd have to look at that, but if that were a condition, it's something that I could have the city attorney review before the city council meeting and give my recommendation based on the city attorney's recommendation for that part, if that makes sense.
If I might just do one follow-up here. James, the boarding house is a rental licensed property?
We would require a rental license, so it would have to follow our property maintenance as well as conduct on premises as well.
And so, the conduct on premises, the piece here, I think that may get to the nuances of what, what I think, it feels like we're trying to...
So, another condition would be repetitive?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at. Okay.
So, I think, I think basically the conduct on premise, if there are violations that police respond to, you, you, the landlord or the operator of that facility basically has a conversation with the police department. If there's a recurring event, there is another level of engagement here that you're now going to communicate a plan of action with the chief of police or the police department that says, how are you going to manage for any further violations or problems here? And then, at some further, depending on the type of establishment, the third or, or fourth one triggers, basically, you lose the license and you lose the ability to rent, and that basically clears, so that no longer can function as a boarding house because it's an unlicensed use. So, I...
I think that satisfies me.
I think, doesn't that, it feels like it gets there, right?
Well, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for asking. That was one of the questions that I had and forgot to ask, so, thank you.
So, the, we, we, we look to our left to the craftsman.
All right, so, I will, I'm making the motion to approve, recommend approval of the conditional use permit for the operation of a boarding house at lot two, block one in the proposed plat, the existing pin numbers four one oh four, oh five oh five, four one oh four, oh five oh one, four one oh four, oh five oh two, four one oh four, oh five oh three, contingent upon city council approval of the final plat for the block and the applicant and the city entering into a developer's agreement to be recorded against the subject property with a clause, let's see, where do we have that, which includes a clause requiring the owner to install the additional parking stalls, in this case, two, upon a finding of the city that such additional parking stalls are necessary to accommodate the use.
I'll second that.
Motion by Erickson, a second by Gorm. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Did we accurately describe the deferment, or do we need to amend that?
That was correct.
All right.
Question of James, if I might.
Yep.
I don't, you had talked about shrub screening along, between the parking lot and the 12 plaques. Do I need to include something like that, or was that already?
That's already in there.
It's already in there. Thank you.
So, it's in the soup. So, we have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I do. Just a couple of comments. Just, I know the applicant had submitted this previously. I still have several concerns, particularly about the boarding house use and things like that. I'm going to support the motion. I've made this comment before. There's other, you know, I don't feel like it's the, our role to kind of get into the operations of how things are handled, but there is impacts in this case and in others that the city needs to consider. But I do appreciate that the applicant has addressed a lot of the issues, the density issues that we initially brought up, the lighting, and, you know, simply the fact that, you know, this is a nonprofit, it's being privately funded. Again, if the group was asking for the city to participate in funding, it's not something that I would support, but they're not. You know, this is being privately funded, and, you know, it's a nonprofit seeking to address critical needs in the, in the community. So, again, I had concerns about the boarding use, the nature of that, but I do plan to support it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. We'll go to vote here. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries. James, could you inform the applicant of next steps on both of these conditional use permits, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, both these conditional use permits will be heard at the city council meeting on November 7th at 7:30, along with the preliminary plat. And then, I know the applicant has also filed a application for an alley vacation, so essentially the alley vacation will have to be approved before any of the, the other applications can be approved. And that's everything.
Very good. Thank you. So, we are moving on now to item 7D, a discussion on proposed ordinance amendment restricting the demolition and removal of dwelling units. Maybe allow the room a moment to clear, although I can assure you, this is, this one's a captivating topic.
[laughter]
So, James, could you set this one up for us, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, ordinance number 1534 went into effect on July 17th, which imposed a six-month moratorium on the conversion of dwelling units to green space or surface parking in the R1 zoning district. The city does have a shortage of housing, particularly affordable housing, removal of dwelling units for the establishment of green space or surface parking as the overall shortage of housing. So, city staff and the planning commission were tasked by the city council to study the issues related to conversion of dwelling units and shall provide recommendations to the city council concerning proposed changes to the city code. So, with this, the planning commission held a workshop on September 7th to review issues related to the conversion of dwelling units to green space and surface parking. The planning commission discussed the need for residential housing in Brainerd and the shortage of housing in Brainerd. The commission reviewed an example ordinance from the city of Crosby, which I also included in this packet, and then directed staff to make changes based on workshop discussion related to issues in the city of Brainerd. So, with that, if we go to the, the proposed ordinance change by staff, two specific areas, I know we talked about, was that we're going to limit this to residential, as opposed to residential and commercial. So, that was one big difference from the ordinance that staff is proposing here versus the Crosby ordinance. I did want to point out here that I put in the TN1 district, the CN1 district, and the CN2 district. These districts are primarily housing, along with some other institutional functions, but this is where most of our single-family homes are. There is a potential, if planning commission believes necessary, to include the TN2 district in it. However, the TN2 district is really, it's a mix of commercial uses as well as residential uses, so there's kind of a bigger mix there where it might stifle potential commercial development in there. So, at this time, staff did leave the TN2 district out of there, but something certainly for conversation. We did talk about leaving all of the exemptions in there, which you'll see as part of C in the proposed ordinance. And then, the other part I wanted to point out, staff was trying to review which section of code this would best be put in. It was, it was kind of difficult to, to look at that. When I did look at it, I was recommending 515-4-14 as part of the general building requirements. Putting it at the end would create its own category rather than putting in something else, which would be nice because then it would stand out in our table online, just be in a completely separate category, so it's not something that's missed or overlooked, something that's also easily seen by potential developers if they're, if they are looking at the zoning code as well. So, I did think it should potentially be its own section, so it could be called out on our zoning table online. So, with that, I will open it up to the planning commission. Certainly let me know if I missed anything from the discussion, or if there's any other questions that you have.
Thanks, James. Questions of staff, first of all, before we kind of, kind of dive in here?
I got a question, Mr. Chair. So, I just want to confirm, so this is, you're going to bring this back to us in November. Does initial review, bring it back in November? We can have a discussion then?
Yep, so this one's just kind of a discussion. Did I meet all of the things that we had talked about in the workshop meeting, and then we'd open it up to the, the public for an actual ordinance change the next month?
Okay.
Based on our, and then make changes tonight based on our conversation. So, really, no motion has to be made tonight as, as part of this.
But the intent would be to go to a public hearing at the November meeting?
That's correct.
Saying the next meeting, just to be clear.
Yep.
And then, and then that sends it to early December to city council, presuming that we...
For the first reading, then there'd also be a second reading as well. So, we would still hit that timeline of the moratorium.
Other questions? Ms. Gorm, your, your body language says yes.
I have a question. Yes, I have a question. So, let's take, for instance, Harrison School, when it was the proposed expansion of Harrison School. Was that in, that's a TN2, or is that a TN1 neighborhood, Harrison? That's TN2. So, I'm just kind of wondering why you're, we're excluding TN2 from this, because that's an example of a neighborhood where you had an institution that was proposing to eat up quite a bit of housing. It seems like that neighborhood probably deserves the same protection as maybe TN1. I'll just put that out there for a thought.
I would, I would concur. I think we've got Kingwood and Oak as sort of the premier corridor base TN2s. We have some spots up on Mill Avenue as well. But I think getting at that, that point of where we may see this having an undesired effect on our housing base, you know, so, so the guidance, I think, for, for the commercial, this may be one of those places where, where that doesn't quite catch our expectations, I guess.
And TN2 is a residential zone. It's just a mix of residential and commercial. So, certainly could be, could be added to this as well. I live right by Harrison, so, I, and I didn't take that one into account. I was thinking of some of the other elementary schools right in the TN1 district, but, but yeah, that would be part of the TN2 district.
I don't know that I see the same effect over in the James and Jackson block there, where we have another clump of TN2. That one, I don't, I don't see the amoeba effect. You know, it's already, it's already got a proportion, a greater proportion of commercial in there amongst the residential.
Maybe we do because we never had this ordinance so long time ago, to prevent the, those neighborhoods from being cannibalized.
Yeah. So, those, when I look at the zoning map, those are the, those are the hotspots. We have elements of TN2 along South 6, Oak, Kingwood, northwest there at James and Jackson, and the apartments there abutting the arb, and a few spots up there on Mill Avenue.
Mr. Chair, as you list those, and if you got the map there, please refresh my memory, but, oh, what would it be? B Street up in northeast? Seems very similar to me in nature to, like, Kingwood, experiencing that commercial pressure. What's the...
That's a TN1 neighborhood, except for the Washington frontage, the half-block Washington frontage.
Just as you were listing all those, that one came to mind. It's very similar experience in that commercial pressure. I couldn't remember what that...
So, that, looks like that's in the soup already with the language here with the TN1s, CN1s, and CN2s. Any other thoughts on this, or any reflections back on the workshop and things that...
I have a question for James.
Yes, Ms. Gorm, please.
In the wording of demolition of dwelling unit... In the, the wording of demolition of dwelling unit, does that also include if we have a, say, a two-dwelling unit and it goes back to a single-family home? Is that considered the demolition of a unit? Or is it...
That would be considered a demolition of a unit.
Okay.
Say that again, please?
That would be considered demolition of a unit. If you went...
So, a duplex being, an, an old, an old large house broken up into a duplex or a multiplex and then being renovated back to its original form is, is what you would consider a demolition?
Of a dwelling unit, correct.
Is that where you were going?
Yeah. Is that, that's something that would still be, like, somebody would be able to apply for a permit to do that still if they wanted to renovate an old house back into a single-family?
Potentially, potentially with a variance. And something like that, it, it would, would make sense if it were historically a, a single-family home, you know, versus something that maybe is a duplex.
Yeah.
So those, those things could be considered.
That's what I'm thinking in my head, is one of the historic homes where they have a family living upstairs and a family living downstairs, but you can tell it used to be one house.
Staff did consider that as well. Since I've been here, we haven't had anybody...
Reconvert?
Yeah, reconvert. So, yeah, I, I didn't think it was as big of an issue as I was seeing here with the, the dwelling units, but I did think that, you know, there could be a potential roadblock for something like that if somebody did want to reconvert.
Okay.
Boy, that was a very, very enlightening question now, as I... So, i- i- if that, if that proposal were to come to you at the desk, because this is a, this is a administrative permit, at this point in time, if, if you meet all this, if you meet A, exclusions 1 and 2, you get a permit at the desk?
To recon, to convert to a single-family?
No. I- i- if you meet, you can issue a permit if, a building permit's been issued at the same time. So, basically, this happens at the desk now, but at the point at which Ms. Woodward's example comes up, that, you know, I've got this, this old historic home that, that has been divided up into separate living units, and I want to re, re, restore its, its former grandeur and think that there's a market for that.
We...
And you can't issue a permit here because, basic, or can you? Because...
We would not be able to administratively issue it, because you would be taking away a dwelling unit.
Okay, so a replacement, the, the key here on A, A1 is a replacement dwelling unit. So, even though I have a, a dwelling, a residential dwelling with multiple units, I come back in, I'm, and I get my building permit to, or apply for my building permit, what you're, what you're saying is the replacement, the fact that you're taking one or more away in that process.
That's, that's correct.
So, so where's the off-ramp here? Because I, I feel like we talked about it at, at the workshop, my notes were very, very scant unfortunately, about the off-ramp on, if you don't do this and you still want to proceed, does that send you to the variance? Does that send you...
Yeah, to, to me, this isn't a use. A use is, it would be something in the use table. Here, I believe you'd be asking for a variance from, in the way I have it coded here, 515-4-14A. So you'd be asking for a variance from that section of code.
If I, if I may speak on that one more time, I think that the preservation of the number of dwelling units in the city of Brainerd outweighs the unlikely chance that somebody would actually convert an old home back into a single-family dwelling. So, I'm still completely in favor of...
I don't, I don't disagree, but I'm just trying to think, from a process perspective, how do you, how do, how do you flow if, if, if you don't get the administrative permit at the desk? Where do you go next? And, and how does that process go? And, and, so you're saying it would be a variance, and then I'm going to rub my chin and go, okay, so what is my practical difficulty? So, is, is it even, is it even viable, or, or is that a dead end? You know, I think, you know, get back to what's our intent here, and our intent is to preserve dwelling spaces. So I'm just trying to just think of, from a process perspective, if we're bringing people here and there's no practical difficulty, then it's almost a doom loop where you, you pay to be discouraged.
One potential practical difficulty that I could see in it is, you know, a lot of the homes that are cut up really don't have the flow or the, the space that, you know, that you're really looking for in houses. You know, bathrooms or other things could be kind of placed in, in odd areas, things might not be ADA accessible. You know, there certainly could be houses that are, are, that were historically single-family homes that were cut up, that do meet all those standards, but they certainly might not. So re-converting into a single-family home might, you know, create that overall flow that the house, house is originally intent, was intended for.
That helps.
So I think that could be a potential argument.
So, variance, you could, you could imagine a variance scenario that, that you could, you could possibly meet the, the practical difficulty test.
That's correct.
And, and it'd be consistent with, with other aspects of the plan and...
Yep, that's correct. Because I know that part of the comprehensive plan is preserving historic structures. I think that, you know, would, would fall into that category as well.
Other thoughts or questions?
On including TN2, is there a consensus that we should include TN2?
Is there an argument against?
I had a kind of, go ahead.
I'd say I don't have one against. Go ahead, Ed.
I don't have one against.
Well, I, I was thinking about that scenario that you just brought up about converting from a multiplex to a single-family. And if we do include TN2, the, the situation could arise where you're converting from a triplex to a full insurance office or something. Is that a scenario? If we include TN2, is that a possible scenario where they'd reconvert from a triplex, say, to fully commercial, or is that not? That wouldn't be consistent with TN2, or would it?
I think TN2, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, well, and if it, and if it was possible, then we'd have the same kind of no-off-ramp type of situation, but go ahead.
I think TN2 is one of the areas where we have an opportunity to protect dwelling units, because that is one of the more likely areas where they're going to be converted into office space, so they're going to be converted in, back into business space of some kind.
Or be purchased and, and then, and demolished and returned into a, and turned into a business.
Yeah.
Because the real estate is too valuable.
Or turned into a business parking lot.
That's kind of what I'm getting at.
So, I'm just thinking, this is already something in place, but just as an example, something like the Fine Line Salon there, we'd be precluding a situation like that because they've taken an old home, converting it fully into a commercial use.
Yeah, you know...
Is that accurate?
Yeah. They would only have to maintain the number of dwelling units. So, if there was still a dwelling unit on the, the second floor, then the first floor would, or something like that.
I'm just throwing out an example of, just trying to think of other unintended consequences of food for thought.
James, would you care to, to weigh in, or you want to watch us swim a little more?
I know from a staff perspective, a couple of my favorite districts are TN2 as well as the Town Center District, because there is a lot of opportunity for market-driven development in there. I know part of the TN2 district that, that I myself as staff likes, that it could maybe aid in, in helping to create complete neighborhoods by offering amenities to those neighborhoods. Adding businesses there, adding maybe a small convenience store, adding, you know, stuff that neighborhoods need rather than having to drive everywhere, was, I think, kind of a little bit of what we're looking at TN2. So all of a sudden, if we, you know, stop the conversion of a potential dwelling unit to potentially a, a, a business that would be productive to the neighborhood, you know, do we want to stifle that? But again, would they, would an existing business potentially take down a dwelling unit to add parking space? That's certainly a concern as well. So, I think those things could be weighed, and I guess I'd look for guidance from the planning commission on that part of it. But I, those were the, kind of the two things that, that I was looking at as well with that TN2 district. I also, when you look at the map, it is a, compared to the TN1, CN1, CN2, it's a fairly small, smaller band, so it's not our major, major housing areas within the city. So that was also taken into consideration when I was looking at it. But certainly, staff would be open to, to adding the TN2 district as well if, if planning commission sees a need for that.
Yeah, because that's, that's where I'm, I'm starting to get caught up a little with adding the TN2, you know, when we're looking to try and get compact pedestrian-oriented mix of residential neighborhood serving commercial uses reinforces the pattern of small connected lots, blocks and street, supports development and redevelopment consistent with this pattern. And if we say that you're going to have to use bare ground to do commercial, we don't have it in these spots. You know, if you wanted to add the convenience store or, or the coffee shop there at, at the half-block or whatever, you know.
And, you know...
It gets knobby pretty quick if we, we, sort of what we had envisioned at TN2 being, and then if we say you can't, you can't take a, take a dwelling unit, or you can't take the basement of a multi-story, multi-residential and say that, or the, the first floor and make that the insurance office with residential above, then, then we may be, we may be dis- disabling what we were hoping to do with the TN2.
If, if I may, I think that, that would be an argument for a variance request, that they would have a practical difficulty, that they are looking to put their home office in and need that, that they're not destroying a dwelling unit, they're adding a, a home office or an office of some kind in there. And I think it would also encourage the redevelopment of the current commercial spaces and make those, the current commercial spaces perhaps a little more desirable, so that those would be improved upon. We already know that there's a, that the dwelling units are highly sought after, and there is a market for those, but the commercial space might need a little push as well. So by, by encouraging people to redevelop the current commercial spaces.
Do we have enough faith in the variance process to say that we could have TN2 included and have the variance as a way to get around these? Or should we leave it out? I, I can see both perspectives here, I'm just kind of... I think we're more likely, obviously, to lose residential and gain commercial than the other way around. That much I'm confident in.
I guess, I think both of you put that really well, and so I like that concept. But I'm just concerned that we, you know, by, by doing, by going down this road, we even lose a little bit of the form-based concept that we've been trying to go to with the zoning ordinance. So if you have a property, you know, you can tear it down only if you rebuild a single-family home or, or another residential, versus, I want to do a commercial and make it fit into that neighborhood, make it, you know, kind of those...
Sure.
So, that's my only hesitation, is that we preclude somebody from doing a really cool thing that would fit that neighborhood. So, I think, I think we'll get there, but we just have to, there's a, there's a, a middle ground to be struck here, and I think we're, we're, we're getting there.
Yeah, I would agree. I'm not, I'm not all far to it this way.
Right.
I'm open to a discussion on that.
So, you know, how this, how this came to us was about converting residential to flat space. You know, but if, if, if the commercial use in the TN2 fits and it's not flat space, it's not the parking lot, it's not the green space courtyard or something like that, which may still look nice, but you've, you've removed housing in order to make a lovely little sitting spot with flowers and fountains, you know. So if we could, if we could think about it like that, to say that, you know, our heartburn might be with turning, turning houses into flat space, and, and maybe that becomes the, the way to package TN2, to say that you're making a commercial space or something like that is consistent with the intent of, of what we did with the zoning ordinance. But if you're going to remove something to make an oversized parking lot on Kingwood, we're not, we're not good with that. That gets you, that gets you out of the game.
Yeah, I, I like...
On A, would it be able to say at the end of districts unless, or TN2 to parking or green space? Is that something...
Give TN2 a special status.
Give TN2 a special status?
Yeah.
That it, you just can't level something?
That would have to be consistent with the overall goals.
Yeah.
And, and ideally, in TN2, there is a, a living space or a unit included, you know, a mixed-use type of thing, but perhaps not the case.
The, the only goal we're looking for in TN2 is really then to make sure that it's not turned into a parking lot.
Yeah.
Or open space.
Or open space.
Open space.
Which eventually wants to be turned into a parking lot.
James, what do you think?
Yeah, potentially, I'll have to think of the wording of it, but you could look at, you know, a special line for the TN2 district. Much like we have to authorize with a, a building permit in order for the demolition permit, you'd have to authorize, you know, potentially a remodel permit for a commercial space and have that building permit issued, authorized, planned review in order to remove that, that residential space. So I think, you know, potentially something like that could work.
At the building permit place, or are you, or are you suggesting a new line in here?
It would be, it would probably be a new line for the TN2 district. And we'd have to add the TN2 district in, in section A, but then also add a new line, you know, potentially that a commercial remodel permit has been issued at the time of, at the time of the demolition permit. Much like a building permit has to be issued at the time of a demolition permit for a residential unit, if you did want to go, go down that route.
I can wrap my head around including TN2 in A and then adding sub 3 with the specifications. I don't think, I don't think that overcomplicates things, and I think it allows things to be completed at a permit level versus coming in.
I'm good.
Body language is kind of supporting that idea, James, so...
Good.
Just track your changes, though.
So again, this is going to, the intent clearly of this discussion is to say that TN2 is a residential district. We don't want to lose residential u- units, but in this special district, it has that, that connection to commercial, and we want to support that. So, our, our focus is not necessarily losing the residential unit as, as much as it is losing, losing that current structure to parking lots or an open space. And if we can make that happen, you know, I, I think we can probably throw that to James DeCraff.
Right.
And we'll, we'll see that in November.
At the public?
You've got to do it right, man.
That's correct.
Do your very best. I mean, that's what we're saying, basically, unless we want to have one more chance to review it. But I, I, I think we've got the spirit of what's going on.
Yeah.
If, generally, if we are comfortable to say...
And we have confidence in, in his skills.
James, can you take the spirit of what we're talking about here? Give us the TN2 specificity that, that captures the discussion. Give us the TN2 specificity that, that captures the discussion here, and we'll, and we'll take it at, we'll take it at the public hearing next, next month.
Okay.
Anybody, Dad, are you okay with, with that approach?
Yeah, I, I think so.
Good.
Might mull it over between now and then, as I'm sure we all will, but I think that captures exactly what we're, we're trying to do, so.
We're trying to say that the house behind Starbucks is just as important as the house next to St. Joseph's, St. John's Hospital, but they're different, but they're both important, that's all.
Yep.
All right, so as a, as a, as an alternative, if, if you have trouble with that, we could conceivably put a workshop together between now and then to, to maybe have a look at it one more time, if folks can be fluid on that.
Yeah, I'll let you know if I'm, I'm struggling with that, and we could potentially do that.
Yay. All right, that one's bludgeoned.
And then what was...
Any other guidance that you'd like on...
Yeah, what was the thought from Planning Commission on the, the section in code that we'd be potentially putting this new section of code in?
So you're adding a new section, so it is, it is identifiable, it's searchable, 414, you say?
Yep, so that would be after essentially the last section of 515-4.
So street loading is, so yeah, so that, it makes sense to me to have its own section, and it seems to me that's in the right...
Trying to add that further up, you'd have to almost amend that entire section of code, changing, different, it'd be very long. So staff believe that that was probably the, the best spot for it, and then it would be called out in his own section as well on our, on our city website.
15-5 administration with, did you, what were the reasons you didn't look there to, you know, where you're talking about a lot of the...
Administration is typically more how do we do variances, conditional use permits, that type of stuff. That's more in the rules of, yeah, procedural stuff.
Any thoughts on, or suggestions otherwise to 514-14? There you go.
Okay.
Raj, good. Thank you for doing that and pulling that together. We are now on to 7E, Discussion of Industrial Zone Building Design Standards. Want to set that up first, James? I, I'm curious as to where this has come, or what's driving this, maybe is the, probably where I would value getting the most input on the setup.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. So recently, there is a police cold storage building that was built on T.C. Drive. They, there was a original design that was submitted with essentially all steel siding. It did have to, upon review, meet the conditions of our, of our zoning code. So it was brought up, kind of questions, these buildings in, in the industrial zone that are really off the beaten path, that nobody sees. Does there need to be the industrial standard, standard that we have currently in our code? There's essentially two standards that we have in our code. One that are just in the general industrial district, not on our major thoroughfares, which essentially says that metal panels shall not encompass more than an average of 50% of the street side of the building elevation. A good example of this is the FedEx building in the Brainerd Industrial Park. You'll see, they had, besides the garage doors, they had to meet the standard for brick on there, and then they also have some of the steel siding on there. The rest of the building could be steel-sided. There's a lot of other examples within our industrial park before the zoning code where there's a lot of buildings that are just steel-sided. But within our zoning code here, FedEx is an example of one that had to adhere to that, even though they're not on the major thoroughfare. Section 2 talks about having to meet the commercial exterior building standards established in the zoning code, so this would be on three, business 371, 210, 25 and 18. A good example of this one is Anderson Brothers, a new construction building that's pretty much all concrete. Obviously, obviously looks very nice there, isn't metal-sided really at all. They are allowed, I believe, 25% of the building in the commercial zoning districts to have, to be metal-sided. So we didn't really look at this as much, the general industrial district, from a, a Planning Commission side of things. So I think there is questioning, you know, should we take a look at it? Does anything need to change? Do we have it right as is? Something that I believe staff just want to take, have Planning Commission review.
Thank you. And, and these standards are almost verbatim what was in the, the old code for...
That, that's correct.
The industrial 1 and 2, and for the, you know, for the, for lack of a better word, this is our old commercial districts, except for the downtown, right?
Yep, that's correct. We pretty much took it from the old one to the new one. We didn't spend a lot of time on this part of it, and we didn't really spend a whole lot of time on the general industrial.
Slipped in the new district acronyms and...
Yep.
So that, so we've been living with this for a while. Are you aware of any complaints that, that we've received about that standard?
There was a, another business that was concerned about is an addition that was put on, but they had added on to the backside of their building. But a number of years ago, they had to go through a variance procedure, I believe, I believe it was maybe five to six years ago. And they had believed that it was going to be too costly to do that when nobody really sees their building. I think this one was on Madison Street or close to it. So there, I have heard a few times where, you know, wire buildings that nobody sees, you're required to, to have a, say, a dimension, so stone standard on the front, front of their building. So it has been, been brought up a few times. I'm, I'm not sure if it really impacts remodeling or development, but it has been brought up, brought up a couple of times. And just, just to add, you know, the, the section that we have for the, our major thoroughfares, I, I, from a staff, staff perspective, I do think we have that one right. We want to, you know, we want to see those buildings that are along Highway 210, look nice with our, you know, corridor, that's part of our comprehensive plan, is making some of those corridors nicer there, even going through the industrial park there. So from a staff perspective, you know, I, I think that one works for sure. The first one, you know, something that I certainly want Planning Commission to review to see if we do need to take a look at this, or we, you know, we may just have it right on, on where it is in the code.
So the old, our old term that we used in the comp planning process, the gateways, right? Gateway plus, I think this is broader than that, but the rationale for having that aesthetic to make sure that reflects the cities, the city well when you come along these major thoroughfares. Discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Is this something that, should somebody want to use metal panels and feel that it's not visible? Is it something that they could just get a variance request for on a case-by-case basis to say, would they be able to prove a financial hardship?
And that, that's not a requirement for a variance. Financial hardships can't be used.
So if, if Pepsi wanted to re-side their building and all soda kegs cut in half and put on there, that would be sort of a metal, all metal siding, it'd be thematically, it would fit Pepsi's image, you know, we sell, we sell syrup, and, you know, would we be okay with that? That's, that's kind of almost, or you can think of other examples of, would we want that look in our industrial park? Do you care, right? That's, or do you only care if it's visible from a thoroughfare of consequence, a gateway, or you only care if it's visible from a residential neighborhood? Do you care?
I care.
All right, thank you.
I would just simply contend that the people who work in the industrial zones are people, and they deserve aesthetics that are just as pleasing as anybody else's aesthetics. So I would say, yeah, I'd say, I, I care. I'd say keeping up standards everywhere is worthy. That's my two cents.
If I can also add, I think the aesthetics are there to encourage upkeep of the property, because that also encourages better neighborhoods, better, better areas. But also, we're looking towards the future too, and what else may be their neighbors in the future, not just what it is at the current time of the building.
And question, I guess, so those two comments, it sounds like you're in alignment. And that's how it's written currently, so you're, you both are advocating for leaving it. Is that, am I understanding that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And, and I'm fine with that. I mean, I don't know, we, we wouldn't be looking to make it more restrictive, I wouldn't, would hope. And, you know, by changing one, you know, we'd be prioritizing one over the other. So I, I'm fine with, and it doesn't sound like there's been complaints or issues, so I don't know that it requires any changing from my perspective.
I'm good with the rule, as is.
Reading the body language and of the, of the commission is that I think we're comfortable with the standards as they are for both 1 and 2, for, for the general industrial areas and then these, those that, abutting the corridor, the special corridors identified, so. Is that the clarification you were hoping to hear, or...
Yep, that's clarification, just...
Is that adequate clarification for you to be able to implement, Minister?
Yep.
Very good. Thanks for bringing that forward. So with that, we're at item 8, the public forum. And Brent, we have no means of inviting the public, it sounds like. We can't bring them by phone, we can't bring them by, by webex, so we, we don't have a public, if I look out here. So I will open and close the public hearing at 8:02, and then Community Development Directors' report. James?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I did want to update the Planning Commission on Council's ruling essentially on last month's agenda items. So the interim use permits for the crypto-mining facilities were approved by council. The variance request for the guard shack was denied, and then all other variances were approved by council as per the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Did want to also let the Planning Commission know that since our last meeting, we have seen a number of building permits for infill residential properties occur. So we did have a fourplex that building permit went out, and that was for one of Vicky Kinney's projects. Also saw three duplexes, which one of them was a variance that we heard from Eric Stangler. And there were also two single-family homes that were applied for and issued as well. So this is quite, quite a large number compared to what we usually see every year. Typically, in a year, we'll see maybe two Habitat homes for infill, and then maybe one other project. So, you know, so far in the last month here, we're seeing a, quite a number of infill projects. Also wanted to update the Planning Commission on the EDA. So the EDA Main Street Revitalization Grant, the Initiative Foundation allocated 765,600 to the Brainerd, to For Brainerd to be used in the River to Rail Corridor, and asked the Brainerd Economic Development Authority to make recommendations on funding requests. An additional $20,000 was funded by the HRA, an additional $80,000 by the EDA. So at the close of the application window, 44 applications were received totaling over $25 million worth of projects and $3.1 million in total Main Street grant requests. The subcommittee did take a look at all of the projects and recommended 33 projects for funding, which the EDA did approve. The categories within this were housing, second one was landscape, lighting, green space, and streetscaping. And the third priority that was looked upon was small business and childcare. So a lot of great applications came forward, and it looks like some, some great projects moving forward. So with that, that's everything that the Director has.
Thanks, James. Questions? Awesome. We're at item 10, question or comments and questions. This is your opportunity, Ms. Woodward.
We're good, we made it past 8.
No further comments, thanks.
Nothing.
None here as well. So with that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, we have Woodward in second by Gorm.
Well, that was technically, I was making the motion, but I will second it, because you're backing out to her first, so I will defer.
This is my selective hearing at work.
Exactly.
So with that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Thank you very much, and thank you, staff, as well.